Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff. Welcome to the Monday, November 1st, 2021 Exeter Select Board Meeting. First order of business on the agenda this evening was a board interview. However, the interviewee had a conflict and is unable to join us this evening. So we'll jump right into non-public session. The RSA pursuant to which I'm looking for motion is 91A, 3, 2, A, and C. If anybody would make the motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion seen on Madam Clerk?
Select woman round Thiola?
Aye.
Select woman Callan?
Aye.
Select woman Brown?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. It's unanimous. Board moves into non-public.
Okay, the board is out of non-public and we appreciate everybody's patience this evening. Apologize for being a little tardy. But once again, good evening Exeter, good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective staff, all of you watching at home, and welcome to the November 1st, 2021 Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'd like to start by introducing the board. To my right, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, good evening.
Good evening.
Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman.
Good evening.
And Selectman Darryl Brown, good evening.
Good evening.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening.
And Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel, good evening Joanna.
And I'm Nico Papakostandis.
We'll start with public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with any comment. We do ask that if your comment is relative to anything on the agenda, that you wait until it comes up on the agenda. So I'll pause for a moment to see if there's any public. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. We do not have any proclamations or recognitions this evening. I would jump to the approval of the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of October 18th, 2021. And I would ask the board if there are any revisions or amendments to the minutes at this time, excuse me. Okay, seeing none, I would then ask for a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of October 18th, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0. Then I would entertain a motion to appoint Kyle Welch as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission with a term to expire April 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved. Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0. Then I would entertain a motion to appoint Kyle Welch as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission with a term to expire April 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0. Then I would entertain a motion to appoint Kyle Welch as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission with a term to expire April 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved. Second. Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Kyle Welch as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission with a term to expire April 30th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. And I'll go through them individually. First, I would entertain a motion to appoint Herb Moyer to the Communications Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Marshall to the Community Power Aggregation Committee with a term to expire December 31st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you. We have three appointments this evening. All three of these individuals were interviewed at our last meeting. So all of us that can get the seasonal flu shot, highly recommend that as well, so we can all stay healthy moving forward. And as Andy and I will attest, don't get both flu shots on the same day, because it is painful and the likely side effects of that are significant. So we're running on half power, because seasonal flu in one arm and COVID booster in the other arm, and holy crap, so, but it's all good. Go out and get your shots and be community-minded. I'm going to have James pop up real quick and give you an update on where we are with the vaccinations, and I'll answer any questions after he's done.
Great, thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Murray.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board. So, right now, as of Friday evening, we, the state updated standing orders on boosters, so we can now issue Moderna and J&amp;J boosters. Prior to that, only Pfizer could be given. We work closely with the state, any municipality that has their licensing through the state when it comes to their EMTs, that kind of thing, they need to wait on those standing orders to be updated. So while pharmacies were able to issue boosters of Moderna and J&amp;J, now we can. So the Seacoast Public Health Network has been in a waiting posture until those standing orders were updated, so now we can really begin the planning phase. Starting tomorrow, we can begin planning booster clinics where appropriate, so the local housing authority is one. We can also begin planning to offer boosters to town employees that meet the prerequisites based on exposure, age, that kind of thing. So the Seacoast Public Health Network, again, we are working with the local schools as well to offer vaccines to younger students, now it's been approved for children 5 to 11 years old. Assistant Chief Piesaw has already been working with the schools to start planning and organizing this, so now that the Public Health Network can support as well, that will likely be moving forward as the month goes on. As the chief mentioned, the COVID-19 dashboard for the state has been kind of finicky lately, so those numbers are, you know, going to be changing a lot. And unlike earlier this year, when we were doing a lot of these clinics, the pharmacies and local PCPs now have plenty of COVID-19 vaccine as well. So we'll be helping where appropriate, but it is also easy for individuals to go to their local pharmacy, even the big chain stores, what their pharmacies can support as well. So due to an increase in access across the state from these pharmacies, from doctors, public health networks are focusing on getting the vaccines more to those with limited access. So again, we're talking about the housing authorities, not so much like the teachers that we helped with before. Going forward, we'll be working with the public health networks and with the schools to see if that is appropriate, to do a booster clinic for teachers, but whereas in the beginning, when the vaccines were first coming out, it was imperative that we were there, now there are so many other options for teachers to get, that we really want to focus on those with less access. So, and yeah, we will continue to provide support as necessary, where needed, to the public health network and to the community at large.
Great, and any questions for Mr. Murray? Selma Gilman?
Yeah, I guess I have one question. I know that the DHHS database has been in question for at least a couple of weeks, not longer, but they're facing the recommendations of rolling out boosters or whatever on community spread or transmissibility, are those safe to look at? I mean, I'm looking at it from the perspective of someone who's got left on at the Rockingham County Home.
Right, so.
And they make their protocols based on the community spread, what's the other word they use, whether it's, you know, high or...
Right. I'm not entirely sure how accurate the community spread numbers are. I mean, I think most of it was the vaccine numbers that they found were inaccurate. They were relying on CDC data in the beginning, and then trying to get the state's data caught up with it. I guess there's been some issues with those two systems talking to each other, as well as logging boosters as first doses. So a lot of the state websites, information that seems to be confusing right now, from what I understand, is mostly with the vaccines. I'm not sure how, if the community spread data is considered inaccurate at this point. But the CDC has also given enough leeway for the booster in terms of what they qualify as a pre-existing condition or risk to spread, that I think they said about 85% of people meet the criteria at this point. So it's almost a null point, that if, you know, you've got your first couple doses, you can get a booster almost anywhere.
Thank you.
Selma Brown? Thank you. Are there contraind indicators for the 5 to 11 age group?
I haven't looked into it too much myself. I know that it is under the emergency use authorization through the FDA. I'll have to get back to you with more info on that.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Murray? James, I have a couple, and I'm happy to hear that you're able to reach out to folks that may not be able to get to a primary care or pharmacy, some of the housing authorities. Did I understand you correctly that children between 5 and 11, presumably most of them are in schools, if they are kids that may not have the resources to get to a PCP or a pharmacy, you'll be able, or we will be able as a town to work with the school department to get them their shots if the family desires?
We'll be working with the Public Health Network. The Seacoast Public Health Network is collecting data on how many would be interested, how many families are interested, and depending on that turnout, if, you know, a lot of families are interested, they would set up a clinic at the school. If they find that there's, you know, little interest, we'd have to go from there to see if, you know, we could set up a smaller clinic or something. But as I understand, right now, the Seacoast Public Health Network is gathering that data, and we're in the beginning planning phases for that. So Assistant Chief Piesaw is also working with the SAU to get that data as well.
Great, okay. And then, one last question, is there any data out there, and maybe Chief Wilken may want to, this might be for either of you, but is there any data out there suggesting stronger recommendations for masks, given that we talked about, Chief Wilken, what an amazing job Exeter did in terms of getting vaccinated, whether it's 75% or 81%, those are still, either one is a great numbers. And I think a lot of folks here were proactive and got their shots early. If they don't meet the criteria for booster, and somebody got their shot maybe in February or March, is there any data suggesting that the efficacy of the shot may be wearing, and that masks should be strongly recommended until people get boosters? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Sorry. The CDC is still recommending that you wear masks in indoor settings when necessary. I can't speak to each individual vaccine and its efficacy. They're still finding new things about J&amp;J, for example, getting a second dose a month after, and the efficacy of that skyrocketing. So I guess it all depends on the situation. We maintain the same recommendation that if you're in a crowded area indoors, you know, a mask is likely to be appropriate. We recommend wearing a mask in those situations, but that's all the information I have on that this time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you both. Thank you, Chief.
No problem. Anecdotally, I think where you're going, we have seen significant breakthroughs, even with the vaccinated folks, so when you talk about the value of a mask or that, and James is right, we hear the same, or Hampshire DHHS shares the same basic information we hear nationally about, you know, the efficacy of either Moderna or Pfizer dropping into the low 90s, and the booster just pushes it back up darn near 100%. But it's still balanced with, you know, two people, you know, absolutely familiar with, who went and got both shots and have had a great summer, and all of a sudden, they test positive. You know, so that, you know, just leads you to pause, I mean, even though it's the best practice and highly recommended, you know, and maybe the mask would have helped, but generally, everything we can do to get us through this, including the boosters and masks, I think will pay dividends. So as far as the town perhaps looking forward to a mask mandate again, I don't believe from what we're hearing, it's going to come from the state out of Hampshire. It would, and there are communities that have stepped up and said, you know, we're going to reinstate a mask mandate again, and obviously, it's met mixed feelings. It is a very emotional topic when you start talking about the, wearing a mask, whether it's in general or at school or whatever, so, and I think it'll likely stay that way, so it'll be a comfort level if you, and the board is setting a great example, you know, all of you are masked, and I think the public should kind of see that and gravitate toward, you know, the people that are doing the right thing, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I would like to say, since I asked the question, I was not, I want to say publicly, I was not moving towards a mask mandate ordinance, I was asking, you know, whether we should continue to strongly recommend masking as we have said, I want to make sure there's no confusion here, I'm not going to speak for my four colleagues, but I was not looking to start that conversation tonight, so. Anything else for the chief or Mr. Murray? Great, thank you both again. Okay, moving on, we have two discussion items relative to the cable TV. First is for some equipment purchase, and the other is just an update of the Cable TV Fund, and I believe we have Mr. Bob Glawacki via Zoom, and I know Andy Swanson's also here as well, so, so how about you leading off?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And I guess I'll start with the equipment purchase. As I stated in my memo, basically what we're looking to purchase there is just an upgrade and new equipment for the NOVAC room where you guys are right now. You may have noticed last month, we had some issues with the wireless microphones that were in there kind of cutting out, and we had an audio guy come in to try and isolate the problem, and it basically comes down to, you know, to do what we need to do in there, we need to purchase some new microphones. The ones that are in there right now are, you know, of a certain class that can't really be upgraded with what we need to get the signal from the NOVAC room back to the control room, because that, the IT office is surrounded by concrete on all sides, so it's kind of hard to send wireless signals back there. So this new system, that's approximately 15,600 and some odd dollars for the equipment and the install, basically is going to future-proof that room, because it's such a system that the microphones could be, you know, interchangeable, we could, you know, add different kinds of microphones as the needs evolve or things like that. And it's, you know, state-of-the-art technology right now for wireless microphones compared to what we have been using. And the reason this need is there is, right now, the microphones that we're using for wireless mics, we kind of use those from our portable system, which is what we use in the town hall, the wheelwright room, or elsewhere when needed for second meetings or things like that, and right now, we can't offer those while those microphones are in the NOVAC room. So making this purchase would allow us to start to cover more meetings again when, you know, staff are available and things like that. So I think if we ordered this month, hopefully, we'd get them in the middle of December, and they could be installed in January. And it seems like a long time, but with COVID, maybe you guys have all experienced it, ordering something online yourself, but there are big delays everywhere, and unfortunately, the cost of some of this equipment just went up by a couple hundred dollars, which is reflected in this 15,000 dollar figure as of today. The company that makes the microphones had to increase prices because of the cost of production and things like that, but that's why, another reason to purchase it now, because it's probably that trend's going to continue, and stuff will be more expensive, and delays will continue, especially through the holidays with other things being purchased, so. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that memo specifically.
Any questions for Mr. Glawacki? Well, I just have one. These mics, I know, was it a year or two ago, was it the speakers that we replaced? Because I know in years past, when we spoke into a microphone, I know it was for the TV audience, but not so much for the room, but now amplified, did we just add speakers or these relatively new mics?
So when we added the microphones that you guys are speaking into, those table microphones, we asked the audio engineer, we had the speakers that are, if you look in the corner of each room opposite you, those white speakers, those have been there for, before I got here, but they just weren't tied into the system anymore. I'm not really sure why, but, so we just kind of plugged those back in, and as we evaluate these hybrid meetings and things like that, that may be something we have to evaluate, because sometimes with the BRC and stuff like that, there's some feedback issues, but we're hoping that this new system and the type of microphones we need replacing, they look like the microphones you guys are speaking into, which are much more directional, as opposed to picking up sound from everywhere. So hopefully, we'll cut back on all those issues as well, if virtual meetings and things like that are going to continue.
And what's the lifespan generally on these mics? They're used a lot?
The ones in there now are going on five or more years, maybe Andy would be able to speak to that. I think I would expect them to last, you know, four to five years, and again, with the system we'd be purchasing now, what's nice about the way they're receiving and all that stuff works, if a couple of microphones break or something like that, or they were dropped, or something got spilled on them, we can just interchange them pretty easily. Whereas right now, you kind of have microphones and receivers that are pairs, and if one of them breaks, you know, you're kind of stuck with getting basically the same thing again. So hopefully, in that way, that it would, you know, the whole system life would be longer, I think, than what we have now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Glawacki?
And I'll just add, we would be looking for this to come from the Cable Fund, obviously, so.
Okay.
I think the figure on the memo is pretty accurate, it may just fluctuate by, you know, $50 to $100 based on if there's any issues when installing or something, but it should be within that figure, I believe.
Mr. Dean, are you comfortable with the exact figure that's in the memo?
Based on what Bob has said, I think maybe, just to give a little bit of wiggle room, if we could approve up to 16,000, I think that would be good, it's a round figure.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Since things are changing daily.
Yes.
In terms of pricing. If the board's inclined, then I would entertain a motion to authorize Exeter TV IT Department to expend 16,000, up to $16,000 from the Cable TV Fund to purchase and install the wireless microphone system. So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you, Bob.
Awesome, thank you so much. So kind of moving on now to that second memo.
That's his job.
... years a little bit. This is coming about from, kind of going back to the second quarter financial report, and I'll just summarize in memo, in case some of you guys have read it already. In that memo, which was, I think, August 16th, the finance director kind of highlighted all the status of different funds and things like that, and the sustainability of the Cable TV Fund was kind of highlighted as a central issue, so we kind of dug into that a little more. Basically, it comes down to, we've been spending more money than we've been receiving in franchise fees kind of since 2017. A lot of this was needed to kind of get us up to speed, to replace a lot of old equipment and stuff like that. The hours of employees kind of changed throughout the years, but they kind of increased a lot more. There's kind of been both organic and, you know, put-on-us mission creep, I would say, of, you know, we've tried to expand a lot more services, even before COVID, you know, really, we kind of took back the public access operations from the school coordinator who was running that, so we were producing a lot more programs and working with the community to create a lot more content and kind of get out there. And then, you know, when COVID came along, you know, we stepped in and got, kept Zoom going with all the meetings, so kind of the responsibilities have grown quite a bit. And in the same time, as we've been spending, you know, more than we've been getting in, the franchise fee numbers have kind of gone down a little bit as well, and if you look at the chart that's in the memo, it's even projected to be lower income. So in, you know, in the last couple of years, even if we, you know, cut some spending or something like that, the revenue, it's like it's dropped off by $10,000. And currently, just for those watching, and, you know, select board members, in case you weren't aware, the Cable Fund is funded by the franchise fee agreement with Comcast. So when Comcast comes in here to use the public rights away, they have a franchise fee agreement, which I think you guys kind of approved the plan at the last meeting or at the recent meeting, and basically, if you look at your Comcast bills at home, there's a little thing, franchise fee, and it's 5% of the bill, and... And that gets given to Comcast, they kind of put that in quarterly installments, and they give that to the town. Then the town takes half of that money of that 5%, puts it into the general fund, and then half of it into the cable fund. And that's kind of what was established, I think, back in 2011. It was updated to kind of get 50% to the town, 50% to the TV station. And that's kind of what's supposed to support our operations. But I think we've kind of got to a point where we need to evaluate what our operations look like in terms of services and offerings, based on the fact that we've kind of reached and surpassed that ceiling of funding, if you will. And that's basically where we're at now. So, you know, we've had discussions with the town manager and the assistant town manager, and I think we're kind of just wanting to bring this to your attention and kind of get your feedback or any questions you have. Kind of, we made an initial plan of how we're going to try to attack this with next year's budget in terms of trying to get us to be more sustainable in the long run. But I think, you know, we still have to tweak things here and there based on, you know, what you guys think needs to be covered. And if you guys have priorities, we definitely would want to take that input as well. But Andy and I are here for any questions on the topic. It was quite a long memo, so I don't want to repeat it all in case you guys have read it, but I'll see if Andy's in the NOVAC room with you, if he thinks he wanted to add to that, and then happy to answer any questions.
Great. We have read the memo, and Mr. Swanson is here, so Andy, if you had anything else.
The good thing is, Bob talked about a lot of stuff that I had in my original speech, which was three pages long, and I worked all day to make it shorter. I mean, it's pretty easy. I didn't want to use the word "mission creep," but he used it, so, okay, it's "mission creep", all right? And I don't like to use the word "mandate," I'm going to use the word "expectations." Our original expectation was that we do a handful of government meetings live that we had always done, and we did a few repeats of those so people could see them at a later time. And that was it. And we kept on that plan until about 2010. We got another channel and a whole lot more better equipment, and people wanted streaming, and people wanted to be able to watch it video on demand, and we added all that stuff in 2010. So since 2010, we haven't changed, our funding hasn't changed, it's been exactly the same. In the meantime, despite what the government says, there actually has been inflation. Things have, these things have actually gotten more expensive. We've continued to add things on that we're willing to do. Once again, the funding hasn't changed, and really, we were going to bring this up before COVID, or right about that time. Then COVID hit, and then suddenly, nothing's important. TV needs to do its job right now and not worry about the funding. And that's where we went. So today, our expectation, though, is not what it was in the beginning. I want to make sure I actually did write that down. So anyway, I'm fast forwarding ten years from the last time I talked, just so you know. So now, you know, what we want is, we do, almost every committee wants something done with them. Everybody wants to be broadcast. A lot of people don't want to be in the NOVAC room. All these things take time. Got to have Zoom, huge time eater for us. Over and over, and once again, no change in funding. If anything, it's actually, Bob says, has been dipping slowly over the years. Really, the thing that bothers me the most is that we don't have enough money in there for labor, because that's what it ends up taking. It's the same, it's the same for everybody, and even getting people, hiring people is very difficult. So, you know, I'm looking at it, well, if we go back to the original expectation, and we do a handful of meetings and a few rebroadcasts and get rid of all that extra energy stuff, we'll actually have plenty of money to do the job. But I'm not saying that, because I like Zoom. I like to see the public have an easy way to get on. I like to see video on demand, because people don't always see the meeting, but later on, they can go check it out. But I don't think we can afford it on the current funding. And that's, I'm not really here to make any recommendation other than to just say, that's what's happened. And Bob basically said everything I was going to say. We didn't talk during the day today, we just worked on our own little write-ups.
Well, I'm glad you have the same story.
Pretty much, yeah.
That's a good first step. Go ahead, Bob. Go.
I'm just going to add on to that a little bit, of, you know, kind of Andy talked about all those additional things that have been added on too over the years. And, you know, with the labor market in the way it has been, you know, since I started in 2017, we've kind of increased the wages significantly from where they were, just to, you know, kind of distract people and retain people. Even, and with COVID pushing everything through, you know, the roof, we're kind of back again at the entry level wage, as I would say, for a part-time worker. So, you know, people could go work at McDonald's or, you know, in the warehouse and make a lot more money. So, you know, that's an issue. And we've kind of had, we've added on a lot of responsibilities in terms of Zoom, streaming, and all of those things. And when I started, there were five, six part-time employees working here, and now we're down to three. So we kind of have the most amount of responsibilities and duties and the least amount of assistance in terms of staffing that we've ever had. So in addition to, you know, that being our situation, the financial side doesn't really allow us to expand to meet all those needs. So it's kind of like, and that's what I kind of outlined in the memo, is how we can kind of scale our operations back a little bit and kind of refocus ourselves to try to stay sustainable until, you know, another solution is reached, or if the town wanted to increase funding or change something some other way to make sure we have all the people we need to do what the town wants from us.
Okay, thank you. So we're back to that old predicament, expectation, right?
We're not going to sink the boat in the next year or two, but it's taken on water.
So in 2010, you know, we probably didn't have as many committees and boards as we have now.
Three, that we've told.
Three. And that built up gradually, and, you know, I admit that I like to watch meetings on Channel 22, particularly while I work, and I know that a lot of folks like that. And then COVID came, and one of the effects of COVID was, you were able through Zoom to publicly air meetings and committees that previously were not aired. And people enjoyed that. And, you know, starting with you and Bob and all of your staff, I mean, you did an extraordinary job, not only televising it to the public, but making the boards and committees able to meet and continue seamlessly. It's a positive thing for more folks to be involved. I mean, that's government. I mean, that's, we want public engagement. But I recognize that Zoom, and that was a question I was going to ask you, Zoom's expensive. Particularly, I'm assuming it is for the large.
So I don't think we did it tonight, because we didn't open Zoom to the public, but everyone remembers what happened in the beginning. So we pay somebody to sit there with their finger on the button. Because the guy that's out back there running the rest of the show, there's points during the meeting where that guy is busier than, let's say, a one-armed paper hanger, and that's not both the right word for it. When you hit that gavel, there's eighteen things that have to happen. And that happens back and forth. It takes maybe thirty seconds to shut down Zoom if you're already busy with that thing. So we pay somebody, and they sit there with their finger on the button. I don't see any, there's no excuse to not do that, because we know what can happen, and it still happens. The issue that, the issue that we're at, let me finish, let me finish. The issue we're at here is that we have a budget that we can work with, but it doesn't have enough labor hours, and it's not going to be able to. We made it so it wouldn't go out of business, but it's not going to be what everybody wants.
Okay.
You're up, Bob.
Yeah, I've been adding on to that, following up, you know, the way we factored in the hours for next year, it doesn't really include paying someone to sit there with their finger on the button, as, you know, Andy explained it. And, you know, sometimes maybe I think, oh, I, you know, one person could do all that. But, you know, even just me the other day, trying to unmute somebody, you know, since I haven't done it since, you know, we were fully remote, my staff has stepped in and done a great job since we've been back in person. You know, I stroked, and I'm the one who came up with all the protocols to kind of check the location stuff, you know, make sure everything looks all right, press the right button, get ready. So it is tough, and maybe there's other ways we can go about it, using the Q and A function instead of allowing people to talk and using things like that, maybe. There's, you know, other options, I guess, we could look into. This meeting is open to the public, and there were two attendees at one point, and I believe there's just one now. But it is a challenge. In most meetings, I think I gave the town managers some data, you know, how less than two people as attendees. I'm finding it more that boards are using it for members who can't be there, or in a situation like this, I was out sick today, and I played it safe, didn't want to be in the room with anybody. It's very helpful to have this as an option, but just before this meeting, I spent thirty minutes troubleshooting why they couldn't hear me in the room, so.
And I witnessed that. That's no, he did.
And so, and that takes a lot of time and, you know, expertise to train everybody up on how to do that troubleshooting and all of that. So how much of that can we do on a weekly basis? I'm not really sure. And that's kind of the question I have unanswered myself, because I see the value of it and what it can offer, but I also see the firsthand amount of time we put in to make that stuff work.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I was just going to say, with all of this, it makes me think of, you know, Andy used the word "expectations," and I think part of sort of recalibrating the financial schematic of the cable TV fund is going to involve reducing expectations on some fronts. And as Bob said, we sat down and went through the numbers, but when you look at the numbers, basically, we've gone from, in 2014, 15, and 16, and 17 as well, we were turning surpluses back to the cable fund from the operation. And just, it's in recent years, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and now twenty-one, that the numbers have gone the other direction. So basically, we're in a position where we're trying to find savings. If you just look at the 2021 estimated, where it's eighteen thousand to the negative as a projection, our fund balance in the cable fund would be down to 152, 469. Now, that sounds like a fairly healthy fund balance, except it's really not sustainable over time. So that is why we're doing what we're doing. And we're looking at some different options, and one of the options includes, we pay an E-channel assessment right now to the SAU 16 for Channel 13. And what we're doing is suggesting that we no longer pay that assessment, but the Channel 13 costs are absorbed into the school SAU 16 budget and just dealt with through the tax rate. And with those kinds of numbers, with the schools and the amount of money that they raise in taxes, twenty-four thousand should be a blip. It shouldn't really be an impact on the rate that we pay. I'd be surprised if it was even a penny. But these are some of the issues that we've been grappling with around EXTV and trying to make it more self-sufficient.
Can the eighteen and nineteen years be attributed to equipment? Because those seem significantly higher.
Some of it, yes. Yeah, a good chunk of it.
Notes on that. So just talking about 2018, that's kind of, I think I started this full-time position in May of 2017, so then we kind of, I was spending that year assessing where we're at now, and it was a year where we needed a new broadcast server. And if you guys ever want to see what it is, it's kind of just some boring-looking computers, but they cost a lot of money, just like Andy explained to you guys at the BRC meeting, BRC recently, if you watched that, with the IT servers needing to be purchased every X amount of years. You need to buy a new TV broadcast system every seven to ten years if you're stretching it. And that was a sixty-some-odd-thousand-dollar piece of equipment that we split, two-thirds with the cable fund and the school chipped in, one-third for their channel, and we kind of were able to save a little bit, because they didn't have to buy their own system. And we kind of, it's housed here in the IT offices. But just in 2018 alone, we spent sixty-nine thousand dollars on capital equipment purchases, basically. So most of that's going to last a while, but, you know, eventually, we're going to need to replace all that again. And that'll be like a non-really, you know, budgeted expense in terms of operating budget. So that's going to be another, you know, fifty or sixty, maybe seventy thousand if equipment costs go up, and that's every seven years, I'd say. So that kind of brings the sustainability question higher, because if we're sitting at a hundred fifty thousand, you kind of got earmarked, well, there's going to be seventy grand of that that gets eaten up in one year, every seven years or so. So takes a big chunk out of it. And then I would say the other stuff over time is just, you know, increased hourly wages and increased hours as we started to cover more events and meetings. COVID first, you know, a weird year. We oddly had the lowest budget we've had in the last couple of years in 2020 for spending, but we went from eleven meetings a month to twenty-two meetings a month with all the ones we were doing on Zoom. So, and I think now we're back down to maybe fifteen or so, but I just had a couple of quick notes, if you want, on kind of potential things we're going to, you know, the expectations to reconsider. With the fewer hours we're able to offer, we may have to kind of lower some of the expectations on meeting coverage in terms of when there's multiple meetings on one night. Several times this month, there's three meetings at the same exact time. NOVAC room, wheelwright room, town hall, or somewhere else. And it's just, it's not really possible to do that with, you know, three people. Some of the part-time staff work three nights a week to make sure these meetings are covered on top of like a full-time job. And we don't really, as a part-time job, we can't, you know, guarantee that we're always going to have somebody for these meetings, especially when they're short notice or things like that. I step in sometimes to fill those gaps, but that's a potential area, kind of two meetings per night max or something like that. Or, you know, if a meeting gets scheduled a couple of days in advance, no guarantees of filming, things like that, they kind of will, we won't, we can't be as flexible as we used to be. And, you know, I love to please everybody and try and cover as much stuff as we can, but sometimes we just, we won't really be able to. And we already talked about Zoom, kind of, is that up for a potential question? Yeah.
Select one, Rountrill.
I'm in full agreement with you that there should be no expectation that if there's an additional schedule, that there's an additional meeting that's not been on the schedule prior, that's not their confirmed time, you know, and that's something that we can discuss further. But this goes along with what we talked about earlier, about, you know, committees should only really be meeting once a month unless there's a real need, and if so, then perhaps they should have a subcommittee, and those meetings don't require you guys having to sit in the room to video. So I think that's completely reasonable. Last-minute meetings, because people want to talk about some extra stuff, should not require you guys adding on additional staff for that. So I think that's one easy way. But baseline, it sounds like you need a lot more support, a lot more money, and we need to figure out what that number looks like and what that timeframe is.
Thank you.
We didn't talk a lot about it, Mr. Chair, but that's one of the things that I don't think we're going to solve this tomorrow, but the cable fund was set up on a fifty-fifty split with the franchise fees, with half of it coming to the general fund, half of it to the cable fund. I don't know if that's part of a longer-term solution to, we'd have to go back to the town and ask them to make a change to that. That's how it was established via a town meeting article. But, you know, maybe that's a little bit of a hail mary, but it is something that is an option if we wanted to do it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have a devil's advocate question. So in regards to broadcast servers and production equipment, how have we factored in the fact that everybody walks into the meetings with their own broadcast server and production equipment with a phone?
I guess I'm not really following you there, because there's specific equipment that's required to get it onto Comcast. If we cut out the physical channel, we would definitely save a lot of money. But I would assume we want to keep the actual channels, because if we were streaming online, we have equipment that can do that. I mean, your phone, like you mentioned, that can stream a meeting to Facebook or YouTube. But in order to get it on to Comcast, there's very specific equipment that's required to do that, and to schedule the channels out in advance, kind of for replays and things like that, that's where the specialized equipment comes into the picture there. A lot of towns who've never had a channel or don't have the cable revolving fund, you know, they just stream their meetings to YouTube. you know, they just stream their meetings to YouTube. And that works for them. They don't have any sort of external video on demand or replay servers or anything like that. Or they use services like Town Hall Streams, which we used to have, which is a website. A lot of communities just have a webcam and a microphone in a room. It turns on when the meeting happens and there's no staff involved at all. But, you know, you don't have the quality of coverage that we offer. But there's a lot of different ways to go with that. So all about expectations, I guess, what is the town looking for?
Thanks.
Obviously, we need that Comcast link because the franchise fee is related to the, to the cable portion of the bill. And it's not related to internet or streaming services, so.
And, you know, I also think for now, we're talking about being inclusive. I mean, there are still folks that that's their only access to the meeting. So, you know, we want to keep that. Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Dean, I think this is a good, you know, some good first-step recommendations in the memo. We highlighted some of them here. But I think when, you know, we met as a board and went over the draft memo that Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf and I put together, we're going to make revisions based on board's recommendations and bring it back. But I think one of those, you know, moving towards kind of fine-tuning when and how the frequency the boards and committees meet may, may help as well. And we can at least coordinate that. So you'll keep working on this and keep us updated.
Yes, I'd call it a monitoring situation right now and we'll keep you updated.
Okay. So one last question for either Mr. Glouacki or Mr. Swanson. The, is the, is the cost of Zoom, I want to say worth continuing for the participation? But is it, is it overwhelming or is it something that can be sustainable for now?
I'm offering in kind of two, there's two different things, I think. Zoom for us on a TV production side has been great. Like on the public access side, I'm going to say, because, you know, the historical society is kind of relying on ours and webinar accounts for all of their programming throughout 2020. And it's for the amount of money we paid for their webinar account, like it was totally justified by the amount of content we got. We also had a lot of talk shows that we just filmed over Zoom and it was even easier than if they were in the studio. And sometimes we were continuing to use that even though we could be building into TV studio just because of how easy it is. So I would definitely, you know, on the TV side, I would keep it for that. I think the bigger cost side is with the amount of, you know, hours.
Understood.
Staff members there to, you know, operate. And I think Andy could maybe talk more about that. I think that's definitely in question for me for the government meetings unless we find a better way to do public comment safely, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's pretty much what it is. I mean, it's cost us money because there's bad actors out there, but they're not going to change their ways. It's just the way it is. And it sort of answers Darryl's question about the iPhones and how everybody has access all the time now. Originally, you know, people said, well, anybody can come in with a camcorder and film it. That's now theirs. They can then take that and edit it any way they want. And so that's why Exeter TV does it straightforward, no editing, no nothing. People can see it. Because I don't think you want your words edited and put out on the internet. It's one of the reasons why we always did that. Because it was always, that ability was always here. And we had people in talent that maybe wanted to cause some trouble and they sat in here with a camcorder many times. So just because you have the tools doesn't mean it's going to happen. That I guess is what I'm saying.
Anything else? Okay. Did you?
Nope.
You good?
Thank you. Thank you both. Thanks, Bob. Hope you feel better. Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay, so Mr. Dean, you'll keep us, we'll monitor that and you'll keep us posted.
Yes, and if the board members do have any feedback, you know, after you had a chance to go through this in some detail, we're, we're all ears. We'd love to hear from you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we have the second reading of the tree ordinance. We have Kristin Murphy here this evening and also Eileen Flockhart from the Tree Committee.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Kristin.
So the last time I was before you, or we were before you to discuss this, was September 27th. Since that time, we've had legal counsel review the document. And so what's before you tonight incorporates legal counsel's review. As my memo indicated, the primary change was we generalized rights of town, rights of ways, but we did not specify that some are town, some are town-owned rights of ways and some are rights of ways across private land. And that kind of triggered, apparently there's lawsuits out there over free management on private land and what towns have authority to do. So that triggered quite a bit of change. But really, it was centered around that issue. So I guess we're just here if you have additional questions or happy to step through sections of the document again.
Okay. Before we take questions from the board, Mr. Dean, open it up to the public. Is this the second reading?
Uh, yes.
I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the second reading of the tree ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is open.
It's kind of interesting, following Bob Glouacki. The ordinance that you see in front of you would not have been possible without Zoom meetings that started out kind of crunk.
Get back on the air. Okay, we're live.
Okay. So his, his point about Zoom is an issue, whether it's an issue because of COVID or because we're trying to get greater public access for the kinds of things we'd love to do. It provided a much bigger audience for, for our little committee and more expertise. We had folks from UNH and folks from here and there who couldn't drive into town for an 8:30 meeting. So that was a huge plus. And that's why this is here before you, because it worked so well. And I'm here mostly because I'd like to thank so many people who've worked so hard on this, Kristin especially, and the entire committee from one angle or another. One issue would come up, who can come up with a list of suggested trees or trees to never plant? And okay, Jay and Kevin Breen took that on. And, you know, Kristin and Jay met with a legal counsel and Gwen English and Sally Ward and Kristin. I can't tell you how many drafts of the town ordinance we've all looked at. And they kept looking at it and saying, how about this? How about that? And so I think it's, it's really a testament not only to a small subcommittee, but to the way that the town is able to support a little subcommittee from Zoom to whatever. I got to the point where I could pretty much recite that little thing about, you know, this, we can't have a meeting because of Zoom, because of COVID. But I think, and I hope that what you see before you is it's a good, it's a good ordinance. It's not, it doesn't mean that it will never be, you know, modified or changed as we go through it, as we use it, as people know that it exists. And then it's a work in progress, but I think it's a, it's a pretty good, a pretty good start. And I hope you'll feel the same way, so.
Agreed.
But.
Thank you, Eileen. Any other members of the public? Before we close the public hearing and bring it back to the board? Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes and bring it back to the board. Are there any questions or comments for Kristin and/or Eileen?
Mr. Chair?
Selectwoman Gilman.
I do want to thank the Tree Committee and Ms. Murphy for all the work you've done on this to make Exeter a Tree City USA, that program, and bringing all of this to our attention, especially at a time when we're talking about how to make the town more sustainable. This is one of the ways is to have more, more green growth. I really appreciate the work that's been done to make it shorter, changing the jurisdiction to public property or public ways. So that brought it together, I think, more cohesively than I realized it wasn't. I thought it was fine and now it's gotten better, so that's good. The only question I have is about the very end. There's the paragraph for funding. And it's a great idea to set up a fund for this, but I don't think that belongs in the ordinance. If that makes sense. Ordinants are really rules rather than, we can make it a rule to have a fund. But that would be at budget time, well, it's budget time now. But that's my only.
So, no, that's a good point. However, striking that from the ordinance where Kristin works with the Conservation Commission and now you're going to be working hopefully with Sustainability Committee more. Hopefully that comes to fruition next year as well as the Energy Committee, perhaps. The Tree Committee during budget time can work with Kristin to maybe find a place somewhere in the budget for, or to include it in a line item, perhaps.
Yeah, and Jay Perkins does have fund, some limited funding. And so this year, we really were trying to justify some of the, you know, some of the uses of that, not justify, we were trying to identify some of the uses for that funding. And so that's why we included it. But, but I think it does make sense that, you know, we talk broader. That outreach component that this committee has the capacity to do is incredible. And like Eileen had mentioned, you know, we really do have some experts that are engaged in this process. And it's a great way to get the, the community recognizing the significance of trees and the environmental benefits. They bring us for free. So, yeah, I think it's a great tie.
Okay. Does the board concur with suggesting that this be stricken from the, and some we can clean that up maybe for the third hearing? Okay. Any other comments?
I just had one on page seven. I think it says, it says the town warden or designee, I think that means a tree warden under enforcement.
Good catch, Mr. Dean.
Thank you. So you can have a warden in a cemetery, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further? Okay, we'll have our third reading November 15th at our next board meeting. And Eileen, thank you for your words this evening. And I agree, I mean, reading this ordinance, this is incredibly indicative of all the hard work that everybody that you named and I'm sure many, many more. This is a good document. Thank you.
But there's the whole, you know, when you get Bob Glouacki involved in making it happen, it's made it a lot easier for us.
We appreciate all of the hard work of the committee and everybody else that, that helped out. Thank you.
Very well.
Thanks, Kristin. Okay, moving forward, we're going to revisit the Riverwoods tax agreement. We had a presentation at our last meeting by the executive management at Riverwoods and Attorney Summers. And I think, Selectwoman Brown, you requested a little more time to review it. And do you have any, any further questions or comments?
My only comment would be that I take issue with point six, that Riverwoods offers its services to a quote substantial and indefinite segment of the general public. I find that the 300,000 to 800,000 dollar entry cost for Riverwoods makes it a very definite segment. So on those grounds, I would be, and I appreciate the need to set a tax rate as soon as possible. But, yeah, I feel like we need more, we need to dig deeper into this issue because, yeah, it's, it's a definite segment, in my opinion.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions?
I mean, I, I don't want to disagree because I think that that certainly is the case. And, you know, but I, I don't know how much we could do about it, even if we didn't agree. And I guess maybe that's a question for you, Mr. Dean. Like, can we go to them and say, like, can you change your financial parameters to better, so that we can agree that you better meet this?
Well, I think they're two separate issues. They're, you know, you're talking about how Riverwoods does its business. But this agreement is talking about the percentage of tax that the entity pays for its various holdings. So basically, it's, it's, we can't issue them a tax bill unless we have this agreement in place. But I think that's, to the extent that there's another issue at hand, I think that's one more of a relations issue. And reaching out to the Riverwoods executives and so forth to have that conversation, I think, is something the board would need to decide on if you wanted to do that. But I think this is, this is strictly pertaining to the campus and the, the way that the entity is taxed in accordance with the RSAs and their charter.
Right. And I, and I understand and appreciate that. I just don't want to go on the record saying, oh, yeah, no. I agree that this is a needy portion of the population. Therefore, you know, I agree with their characterization because I, I don't. But I also understand, like, this is an agreement that was made, I don't even know how many years ago. And revisiting it would, would, you know, result in lawsuits and, and legal spending from both the town's perspective and probably their perspective. So like, if there was something that we could do, I would be interested to know what that is. And maybe it's a question going forward.
So exploring that opportunity in 2022, Mr. Dean?
Uh, sure.
Just have the conversation, I mean, it's a good point by Selectwoman Brown and Selectwoman Cowan.
Because I do think, you know, at some point, we should probably revisit a bunch of stuff. For example, the academy and how they're taxed. And, and, you know, those agreements were made years before we were, we, certainly I was elected to serve. And so what does that mean in terms of our ability to raise and fund our services?
Yeah, the academy is actually a court case that set that. Back in the, I believe it was the 40s.
Right, so.
That determined that formula.
But we've stuck to it, so.
That's what I know, how their tax load is calculated.
And then, right, and so, I mean, I think that your point is taken, right? Like, I agree that this characterization is, is a little inaccurate from, from at least my worldview here. And so is there something that we can do about this here?
You'd have to change the state law.
Well, can we do that? I mean, we, we certainly know some people.
Yes, we do. Yeah, no, it's an unfortunate phrase. That can hide.
Mm-hmm.
Can hide stuff like we're talking about, yeah.
Right.
So, Mr. Dean, we can, we could look into that next year?
Yeah, between now and then.
Yeah, I mean, I think, like I said, I think the, the point's been made. And I think we can reach out to Riverwoods and engage in a conversation on that issue.
Okay.
Sorry. But at minimum, changing the language in this document so it does not state that it's affordable, or what's the exact wording? It offers a substantial indefinite segment of the general public, which includes residents and sets forth services, and says services are provided in accordance with the term of its charter. No profits or benefits are retained by the Board of Directors. Is that the one you're talking about? Darryl?
The exact phrase, it's number six, substantial and indefinite segment.
Yeah.
Indefinite segment assumes whosoever will.
Right.
And the 300 to 800,000 dollar entry says very definite segment, in my.
Right, which is, you know.
So the basis, I just find the basis.
Even with an 80%.
Even with an 80% return rate on what they were stating. So I think the issue at hand is really the language that's stated right now. I mean, is that something that can be done right now and then?
Yeah, I think it's really predicated there. It's more than that.
So then, this just has to be tabled then until 2022?
No, we can't table it because we have to set the tax rate.
No, what I'm saying is, yes, we set the tax rate as of right now, but this then becomes a further discussion, investigation, whatever you want to claim it to be, for 2022.
Right. An entity shouldn't say that it's addressing an indeterminate segment when it's addressed...
When that's clearly not the case.
Right.
And that is state law. So that's the portion that we would need to change.
Right.
So those elements are just part of the letter, they're not part of the agreement. So those are things that you would want to talk to Riverwoods about outside of the agreement. The agreement is simply something that apportions the taxation in accordance with the RSAs, the way the RSAs have been set up. So that's what determines how the units are charged the full tax rate and what units don't pay any tax. And overall, Riverwoods is about, I think last time we checked, it's about 83% taxable. So...
Anything further? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the 2021 Riverwoods tax agreements for the Woods, the Ridge, and the Boulders respectively. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Selectman Brown. Thank you, Selectman. Moving forward, we have the first reading of the outdoor dining ordinance. Mr. Dean, do you have staff, or are you... Ask me to us?
Yes, so Darren Winham, our Economic Development Director, and Pam McElroy in my office have been working on this outdoor dining ordinance. And it's actually an amendment to the current ordinance that we have that discusses licensing of alcohol use on town property. And the main provisions of the change are just to eliminate or strike out the voluntary not-for-profit as being the only entity that is licensed. And it also changes the licensing requirements to suggest the use of RSA 17824, which is a little bit different than the current RSA that's noted in there. 17822I only pertains to not-for-profits. And so this ordinance would extend the outdoor dining abilities with the board's permission as the licensor to be able to extend their outdoor dining and for purposes of serving alcohol, which is happening right now. As one of the leftovers from, or one of the aspects of COVID-19.
Right. Okay. And I know, I note here that the application comes to your office, but presumably, and I think I read in the ordinance, the health officer and respective public safety would still weigh in?
Right, they would do that. And it also establishes a fee. It suggests striking out the $200 fee that we currently have and going to a per-square-foot fee of $1 a square foot for each calendar year. So this being a first reading, the indication here is to take this in, review it, and if you have any questions, let us know. Or comments.
Sure. While the board considers questions and comments, we would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the outdoor dining ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And there are no members of the public here, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Bring them back to the board. Public hearing is closed. Questions or comments?
No, I don't think so. I know on the application, we do have a review from the highway superintendent because some of these applications are going to be coming out for sidewalks or, I'm guessing, closed off parking spaces or something like that. But it's not, but not mentioned anywhere else in here. I guess it's covered by the other language that, or appropriate or applicable bodies, I guess. I don't even know what I'm trying to say here.
Not sure.
Not sure. Not sure. I just know it says highway superintendent, and then I never see it again.
The good thing is we have two more readings. So, okay, if there are no other questions or comments, the next public reading, the second public reading would be November 15th.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward, Mr. Dean, the station agreement, municipal station agreement?
Yes, so we have, with Amtrak and with the Northern New England Passenger Rail Authority, we have a station agreement that governs how our station is administered here in Exeter. And it just so happened that this was the year that the agreement expired and needed to be replaced with a new agreement. And this is, in your packet, is the new agreement. And what this does is it outlines all the terms and conditions that the town has to abide by in order to operate a train station in Exeter. So it spells out the, basically, to kind of cut to the chase, the town has to do a lot in terms of subsidizing the existence of the station, which is in keeping with how it's been operated in the past. So we maintain the parking lot, we're responsible for maintenance and upkeep of the platform and the roof area and so forth. So this agreement really doesn't change any of that, it just puts it in writing. And we will also continue to be required to have liability insurance. That was something that the representative from NEPA and I talked about, Patricia Quinn. And basically, the town has since, since this agreement's been in place since 2001, has gone out and bought that liability insurance for the platform, so we'll continue to do that. It's been part of the town budget. So other than that, there wasn't really anything more substantive to report on this. Pretty boilerplate otherwise.
And is this an annual agreement, Mr. Dean, or the terms?
No, this is, this agreement would actually go into place until it's replaced by a successor agreement.
Okay.
So we would keep the terms and conditions in place until something changed that precipitated the agreement to be changed or updated.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Dean?
I had two questions or comments. Ticket machine, is that ADA accessible inside the store there? If it is...
It's right on the, there's a picture of it.
I don't know what's going to hand.
No, it's right, it's right next step.
Oh, yeah, there's a new one here. It's not in the...
It's in its new location on the, yeah, out on the platform.
And then is it 76 parking spaces still?
I believe so, yes.
I thought it was 90.
That's it.
Anybody else? Okay. If no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the municipal station agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay. Our last discussion item this evening, the board received correspondence from the owner of 37 Linden Street, who could not be here this evening. And I think, Selectwoman Gilman, you had agreed to speak on behalf of the petitioner?
Yes, I know this person, and I know that she is not available to be here tonight, even via Zoom if that was available. And I know this situation historically, anyway, of the house and the cemetery. Just what we're looking at here is that it's required, a 25-foot setback from a cemetery wall or delineation or burial plot was established by state law in 1994. And the town never adopted it and, or, yeah, didn't adopt it, so we didn't know it existed. An incident occurred where somebody wanted to build within 25 feet of a cemetery wall, and even though it was a state law, it didn't get policed. So then the zoning ordinance was changed to add that into our ordinance, so people want to have a reason to be, to build within 25 feet of a cemetery wall, have an out, or a way to get their job done that, you know, they really want to get done. So this applicant is just asking for the, the way the process works is that trustees of cemeteries and the select board have to give approval or reject this request. And in 2017, the town voted to make the select board the cemetery trustees, so it's a two-for-one deal here tonight. So the case that's happening here, it doesn't involve an Exeter Cemetery. The Exeter Cemetery is actually a nonprofit association. So it's not town property, but because we are a town with cemeteries, we have to obey by the 25-foot setback. I think that this property, where the area is developed, it's on Linden Street and about Gill Street, or Gill Street's around the corner, is, has been there. The cemetery has been there since 1845. That house is even older. The rest of the street behind it is also developed all the way. I don't see that there's any reason not to grant a special exception to encroach into that 25 feet. Reasons given, it's, the purpose is to make the home accessible for the state partner. And the potential removal of the shed that is actually right next to the cemetery fence, so that would be nice to be removed. So all we have to do here is to grant a special exception from the select board and as cemetery trustees, and then give, sign a letter, either the chair or Mr. Dean, stating what we did to provide to the owner and the zoning board they have to go to.
Okay. So if it passes here this evening, it goes to the ZBIA?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Did I make it very unclear?
No. It was consistent with our packet.
I know, I had my computer all set with charts and graphs and arrows and circles and...
No, it was well documented in the packet, but you re-articulated it well. So if there are no comments or questions, then as the cemetery...
I would move that the, oh, no, I can't make the motion because I'm representing the owner.
No, but with the select board as well as the cemetery trustees.
Trustees.
So I would entertain a motion that as the cemetery trustees and the select board approve the proposed use, which is a special exception to a state-regulated 25-foot setback, while abutting a cemetery for 37 Linden Street as presented by the petitioner.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay. 4-0 with one abstention. Thank you. Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman. Okay, moving into regular business, we have two solar exemptions and an intent to cut.
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for map 9122 in the amount of $10,000 for the year 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a solar exemption for map 72 lot 219 in the amount of $10,000 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
And, Mr. Chair, I move to approve an intent to cut for map 5 lot 1.
Second.
Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Mr. Bisson, you've been waiting very patiently. Thank you.
I apologize, I was in my office earlier and working, so I apologize for not being here earlier. Mr. Chair, which memo would you like to hit? I don't know, I don't have the packet.
Why don't we start with the pool?
Yes, all right.
If you would.
Cool. Let me get my memo out. In, well, pool was open this year. We were successful, I feel. But historically, it takes about 200,000 gallons to fill up the pool, between 220 and 300 really, because we have to backwash and everything. But unfortunately, we discovered in the quarterly billing, when we got the bill, we expended 1.2 million gallons of water. Working with the water department, we have located the leak, and we're currently trying to work with a contractor to fix said leak. That being said, it was a very challenging year, even though it was successful with a lot of people coming out, especially when it rained 23 days out of July. So the pool ran out of deficit, and we knew that, and we actually expressed that when we told you we were opening. This unexpected large water bill would be an additional expense in already a tough year. Reason I'm coming to the board, and Molly will remember this, is last year we AlSCO asked for abatement to fill up the pool, and it was questioned why a town department was coming for an abatement to the water sewer and not coming directly to the select board, as you are the people that authorize town departments. So that is why I'm coming to you and open for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bisson?
Did any of the neighboring properties notice they had more water on their property?
Absolutely not. And we actually even tried to find if there was any evidence of erosion or anything, and not one bit. We replenished the town aquifer.
It's recycled.
Yep.
All right.
Is there a way to prevent that in the future, like somebody watching? I guess, so was it, it needs to run for 24-hour periods when it's filling up?
Correct. But we unfortunately don't get a bill until August. So even watching it, we don't have the meter reader stuff. I guess we could ask the water department to closely monitor it, but it is, we turn it on and we let it run for approximately 36 hours to fill it up.
I know how to read the meter.
But I believe, Mr. Brown, if, once we actually repair it, we'll be back to our normal usage, actually. And it will be a lot more efficient. And I've even made suggestions of how to prevent that from even happening. What we believe happened is the water pipe froze, and what happens, it cracks the pipe. So there's a significant crack. We're going to install a mechanism to blow out the pipe at the end of each season, so it'll never happen again.
Mr. Dean, does the water department monitor town buildings like they do private residents and businesses?
I'd have to ask that question. I'm not sure that that's something that they do regularly, but I don't know the answer.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Bisson? Then if not, if the board is so inclined, I would entertain a motion to grant an abatement to the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $20,687.13. Yeah.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, see none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Well, on the flip side, now I'm talking about bringing in additional funds. So I'm happy to announce that the town has received the Cultural Conservative Grant, if you know the moose plates. So it was a chance encounter that Tony from the Arts Committee ran into someone and said, hey, you should really apply for this grant. The deadline is in a couple weeks, so get it going. the Moose Plates. So it was a chance encounter that Tony from the Arts Committee ran into someone and said, hey, you should really apply for this grant. The deadline is in a couple weeks. So get it going. We quickly, between Tony, Scott Ruffner, and Bruce Jones, all came together to collaborate to put in the grant. So we are going to apply $20,000 to restore the Gateway to Founder's Park sculpture in Founder's Park. The town-owned sculpture was installed in 1988 for the 315th anniversary. It was a very, it was an RFP that was put out, and Emile Birch, who has since passed, was awarded the grant, or the award, and he sculpted it. So since installation, the sculpture has suffered damage and deterioration due to the effects of the weather and the proximity to the river. Literally, Hope has some pieces in a box in the library. So unfortunately, with the restoration process, there's really only, we could only find one contractor-inspired ornamental that is qualified to put together. And the only thing the grant asks, and I am going to work with DPW and the Arts Committee, or the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission, is to come up with a plan to have a maintenance of the sculpture so it doesn't deteriorate again. So I'm happy to do it. And with your permission, Mr. Chair and the board, to allow Mr. Dean to sign, I can get him all the paperwork this week, and we can get that going.
Selectwoman, this is the one you spoke of at the last meeting, correct?
No, this is different.
Different, okay. All right, okay, all right. Did you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion to accept the Cultural Conservation Grant from the New Hampshire State Council on the Arts for the amount of $20,000 and to authorize the town manager to sign the grant agreement.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Beeson.
Thank you.
And Selectwoman Rountreeolof, if you could extend the thanks to the Arts and Cultural Commission, particularly Mr. Calendrello, Mr. Ruffner, and Mr. Jones. Is that all you have for us, Greg?
That's it.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we have a draft analysis that's been put together by Municipal Resources Contracted Assessors Agent. The draft analysis was an assessment of the sales price medium, median ratio, which looks like it decreased, Mr. Dean. It was an 11% change from last year.
Right. Went from 89% down to 79.3.
MRI reports that this is similar to what they're seeing in other Southern New Hampshire client communities. Did you wish to speak to this further?
No, only to say it is, it is consistent with what we're seeing in other communities as far as the real estate values. So even though we just had a revaluation a couple of years back, we're still, we're seeing that now, that ratio's starting to slip again. And again, an indicator of what is still a very hot real estate market.
Okay. And, sorry, the action from the board this evening is to sign the data certificate?
Right. This has to be submitted to the DRA.
Okay. Do we need a motion to sign it, or we just sign it?
I think you can just sign it.
Okay.
Just wanted to note it for the meeting.
Great, okay. Thank you. Then we'll segue into your town manager's report, please.
Okay. As you know, we're going full bore with Budget Recommendations Committee meetings right now. So there was the full day meeting, which ended up being sort of a between a half and three-quarters day on October 22. And then another meeting on October 27 with the DPW General. And then this Wednesday is Budget Recommendations Committee for Police and Fire. So that's coming up on the 3rd of November. We're continuing to work through our collective bargaining process with our three unions right now on new contracts. So that process is continuing, and should have an update for the board shortly on that. And then our tax rate was set mid to late last week, and the new tax rate is $24.01 per thousand. That's a drop of 48 cents from the prior year tax rate of $24.49. Then the town rate ended up being $5.79 per thousand. And so that's a drop of 12 cents per thousand. Just a couple of other notes on the tax rate. The county tax rate went up 2 cents. The state education tax remained the same at $1.99 per thousand. And then the school tax rate was a decrease of 38 cents per thousand. So if your value on your home didn't change, then you can expect a decrease in your second half bill. And we do have the tax warrant here tonight for the board to sign. So hopefully, we can get that signed, so we can get the bills out. We are looking to get the bills out hopefully by this Friday and then next Monday, you know, this Friday as a goal, and by next Monday at the latest. So, and just to say thanks to everyone involved in that process. The Tax Office and the Assessing Office do a lot of work, along with the Finance Department in getting the tax rates set with the state. So really appreciate their efforts. We have a new person, a new hire, Gail Moran. She's in the Finance Department. She took Melissa Moffett's place. She's our new Human Resources and Payroll Accountant. So welcome, welcome, Gail. And then today, I was able to participate in a virtual press conference on the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And that included Congressman Pappas and City Manager Karen Conard of Portsmouth, and Senator Waters was part of that as well. Went about half an hour and got to talk about our siphons project again and, and give that some more good, good press. So hopefully, that bipartisan deal will get done. We did receive a notice from Pan Am that they'll be doing some repair work at the Salem Street Crossing on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. That's on November 9th and 10th. Of course, the timing is great. We have our sewer project going on over there. And, but we don't control when they come in and do maintenance. So they're working on a traffic control plan with our Public Works Department this week. And what we'd ask is residents to look for the electronic sign boards, and that will give them more information about the work as it gets closer. Note that the transfer station extended hours are happening now. So that means an additional hour on Saturdays. So we are open from 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. And then on Sundays, we are out there from noon to 4:00 p.m. So if people have extra things they need to get rid of, we have our extended hours like we normally do this time of year. And then fall leaf pickup will be November 22 through the 27. And I'll repeat that next meeting, just so people know when it's coming. And I just wanted to close my report by saying congratulations to the Exeter Women's Blue Hawk Field Hockey Team, who won the state championship in field hockey yesterday, 2 to 1 over Wyndham. So we like to recognize our champions. So good work, ladies.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Is that it, Mr. Dean?
That's it.
Okay. There are no questions for Mr. Dean. We can go right into Select Board Committee reports. Selectwoman Brown, did you have any?
I was not able to attend the Facilities Advisory Committee, but I think the main, one of the main issues that they'll be coming up with as they start to interface with the BRC is they're looking for a select board rep that can better fit their agreed hours. So they're going to meet on the 1st and 3rd Thursday, I think it is, at 4:30. So my business is in full swing at that time. Thursday's at 4:30 at that time. So if anybody is eager to get involved with BRC from the Facilities Advisory Committee angle, 1st and 3rd Thursday at 4:30 would be most appreciated.
I'll tell you what. I'll take that on if you go to Tuesday's Concom meeting.
Tuesday, what time?
At 7:00.
7:00, okay.
Yeah.
When's the next one?
Actually, on the 9th.
Okay.
They're the second Tuesday of every month.
You got it.
Okay, so when's the next?
I'm not sure. I can...
I'll look it up on, when I have a working computer. I'll look it up. Thanks.
It will be most grateful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Selectwoman Brown. Selectwoman Gilman?
Let's see, since our last meeting, I had both the Heritage Commission and the Historic District Commission met. And coincidentally, both of them are having special meetings in the next two weeks because one, we, the Historic District Commission made ourselves flexible to an applicant who wants to do a project within, before December, but wasn't able to appear before us at the last meeting. And we felt it was necessary. It was replacement windows, and you have a certain amount of time you can do them. And so, and then the Heritage Commission is having an extra meeting on the 8th to review demolition requests for 35 High Street by the Academy. And what else? I think that was it.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Yep, Planning Board. So we delayed the continued public hearing of the multifamily site on New Fields Road because they have to file for a conditional use permit for wetlands. But we did approve a conditional use permit for the tear down and re, and put back up of the service poles in the median in 101 for the Public Services Company of New Hampshire, Eversource. So they go around and assess the viability of the structures. They're taking them down. They like to do it in winter so that they do not disturb wetlands or anything as much as possible. So...
Yeah, that actually went through the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
For, so, yeah.
Yep. So that's happening. And that'll be this winter.
Selectwoman Rountreeolof?
Wasn't able to attend the meeting for the Housing Advisory Committee on Friday, but I have the draft minutes. So they continue the discussion of the roundtable event that's coming up for workforce housing needs. And then also started conversations again about the story board map. But I think we're supposed to have a presentation on some point soon to the board. I can't remember what the date of that is, but I think that's supposed to be at some point. And the next meeting is on the 12th.
Terrific. Thank you. I have Sustainability Advisory Committee tomorrow evening. I did attend the all-day BRC meeting several weeks ago, and also attended the BRC DPW Subcommittee, which was a very thorough conversation and discussion about many of the CIP items. I thought the DPW Subcommittee did a great job working with Director Perry. Some interesting conversation on some of those CIP items. And that was it for me. So moving to correspondence, we have a document from Eversource Energy, which is just a copy of New Hampshire Department of Energy Order of Notice of petition for license to construct and maintain electric lines across state land in Exeter and...
That's what Selectwoman Cowan was just talking about.
And then we also have notice from DES, request for action on the Pickpocket Dam. And this was discussed quite thoroughly at the DPW BRC Subcommittee. Mr. Dean, did you want to comment on this?
Only to say that I just wanted to make sure that the board has the very latest regulatory letter regarding Pickpocket Dam. So please review this at your leisure. And then this informs the conversation about the warrant article that is being proposed for Pickpocket Dam.
And the River Advisory Committee meets later this month. I'm sure this will be a topic of conversation. So I'll report back to the board at that time. Reviewing the board calendar, we meet again on November 15 and again on November 22. Mr. Dean, I believe we're going to have the Swayze Park Parkway on the agenda for the 15th, as well as some of our third reading for the tree ordinance, second reading for the indoor ordinance. And I'm sure we'll find some other things to discuss. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned. Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area.